Okay, we're ready to get going here at 7:00 PM.
Okay, well, welcome everybody to the joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency from the former Kattati Community Development Agency on Tuesday, April 14th, 2020. This is our first attempt at a virtual city council meeting. The only thing that will be really different is we'll be taking roll call votes on all of the motions just to ensure that everybody's eyes or nays are heard. And with that, can you please have a roll call? Councilmember Delofo?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Here.
Mayor Skilman? Here, thank you. And if everybody could please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now we'll move on to agenda item number four, approval of minutes and notice awaiting the reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. We've got a regular meeting, March 10th at 7:00 PM. If we want to take a motion on that.
Move to approve?
Second. Second from John Delofo.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. We'll do it by roll call. Councilmember Delofo?
Here, aye, sorry.
Councilmember Lehman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman? Yes, thank you. Okay. And then we will also do a motion for the special meeting on March 18th.
Move to approve? Councilmember Harvey?
Second, Councilmember Delofo.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. We'll take it by roll call again. Councilmember Delofo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Aye.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Aye.
Mayor Skilman?
Aye.
Okay. So we've got those approved. Now we'll move on to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is a designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments, excuse me, as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statement that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on, we may need to change some of these. Just occurs to me. So normally, when we are not under shelter in place, the City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM and by appointment in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. Once the shelter in place is lifted, the Runner Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at 584-9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. I will also note that they have a lot of movies and books on tape available through your library online. The Kattatic Historical Society Museum is normally open regularly the second Tuesday of every month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM and by appointment. For more information, call 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code 94931 to 888-777. Measure G supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattatycity.org. Now, this evening, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati recognizing April 11th through the 17th as the Week of the Young Child. Of course, given our current situation, this proclamation will be delivered to the organization directly. And also to note that we have been, the city has been flying the the flag in honor of the Week of the Young Child. Now we'll move on to number seven on the agenda, presentations. We have an update on the COVID-19 crisis, and so we're going to receive an update on local actions. I believe, is that from our city manager, Mr. Obed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I just wanted to give everyone a brief update on what's been going on, as well as a broad overview. So as everybody knows, we continue to operate under a local city proclamation of local emergency as well as a county and state proclamation of emergency and also an order of the local. The city continues to operate in the shelter in place, through the shelter in place, and we're engaged in EOC calls, both the county EOC calls as well as local EOC calls here at the city among different departments that are responding to various elements of this. So to start at the top first, some, and this is by no means comprehensive, but these are some of the more relevant actions that have taken place at the state. So as is witnessed by this meeting format, there was an executive order issued by the government that temporarily changes the format of public meetings to this virtual format to allow for social distancing and stop the spread. And then effective April 6th of this, just a week ago, the California Judicial Council ordered a suspension of all residential and commercial eviction proceedings. And that's, at least as the order stands right now, that would remain into effect until 90 days after the state, the state's state of emergency is rescinded. Here at the county, the health officer has taken various actions that are related to, obviously, the shelter in place and some of the ones we hear the most about from the public are related to parks and trails. And so for the county health order, the city parks remain closed and posted. The Laguna Trail remains closed to cyclists. The county health officer through the county EOC also has recently established what's called an alternative care site, ACS site at Sonoma State University. This is being established as a contingency in case hospitals become overloaded with patients as they respond to the COVID crisis that they're currently working through right now. And the city continues to push out public information related to this health order, both as a banner on our homepage, but also through our various social media platforms as, as there's things that come up that people should know about. And we also, you may have also noted that there's other activities that will be put up there that people can do during the shelter in place related information on food security. I think I'll get into a little bit more detail here in a moment, but that's, for us locally. So at the city, city, city staff are continuing to work with the necessary safety measures in place. So you'll see police out there patrolling, you'll see public works keeping up the city's infrastructure. City Hall staff continue to move projects forward and process permits of all types, entitlements, and so forth. However, at this time, we can't issue any, any permits that are not permitted under the county health order, but other permits generally, I would say generally they fall into the category of life and safety type permits. So heating, plumbing, that kind of, those kind of permits are still being issued. Others are being processed and held for when the shelter in place order would allow for that issuance. But we're still moving things forward. And City Hall is closed to walk-ins until May 3rd at this point, until we get further guidance from the county health officer. So we continue also to work closely with the Chamber of Commerce and we can, so as part of that, we're, we're continuing to gain countywide calls weekly to coordinate on business, community initiatives, legislation. So both, you know, countywide calls and also we're in regular contact with the Chamber, our own local Chamber here, and we share and closely coordinate with them. We're continuing to work with the Kattati Chamber on maintaining business listing on, on our website so folks know who's open here in Kattati for like food, medicine, and other needs. On the, you know, and as we, as we move through this response to the COVID crisis and things gradually start relaxing over time, you know, the business recovery is going to be an important element, obviously, as we try to get back to normal. On the food security front, so we're also on countywide calls for this, on this topic to coordinate the food response countywide as well as locally. So we're, we are currently working on a Food the Nation drive here at City Hall with Redwood Empire Food Bank, which is planned at the end of this month. So you can, you'll see information about that here soon. And we're also hosting a weekly Meals on Wheels pickup site at the community center. We've been assisting Charles Street Village with their weekly Redwood Empire food drops, just ensuring that they have space to pick up the food drops and, and maintain social distancing. Obviously, it's a sensitive population there, so we've been assisting with that. On, on the project front, so Kessing Ranch, which is a housing development that remains active at this time as it's permitted by the health order due to the affordable housing component in that development. The Veronda Fleddy Ranch House redevelopment has been suspended currently until a revised health order is issued that allows construction there to proceed. With respect to events and other activities, there is an activity guide, the spring activity guide that should be in the mailbox soon. And you'll notice, even in the current version of the guide, you'll see some group events are already listed as postponed in the guide. Others are very likely to be canceled, particularly large group events as we, as we get farther into the year, but we'll know more, but you know, we'll know more in May when we have a revised health order come out. And lastly, just wanted to say that in terms of the health order, today we've seen very few violations of, you know, businesses, of businesses violating the health order. And in all cases, they were self-corrected after we contacted them. So we, as well as all agencies in the county, continue to prioritize education and reforming people out of compliance. And we find that that typically is all that is needed. And, and people revise their activities so that, that everyone can be safe. And that is, that's an update on where things are right now, but I do plan on doing this, you know, at least monthly, just to keep everyone up to speed on the latest actions and where things are heading. And that, that's, Mayor, back to you. That's it for this presentation.
Sorry, I was having issues trying to unmute myself. Okay. Apparently, I can't have anything up on the screen. So, okay, if there are no questions, are there any questions for city manager on his report? From anybody in the city council? All right, not seeing any. So we will move on to item eight. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Obed. Are there any changes to the final agenda?
I think, Mayor, no proposed changes.
Okay. We move on to item nine, citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time for disability accommodation has been requested. And since this is a bit unusual for our attendees today, what I'll be doing, it looks like a couple of you already have hands up, so that's great. So I'll just ask Lauren to call folks who have their hands up first, and then we'll call on folks who are also attending to see if they have any public comment as well.
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. I just wanted to add also that for our listeners, our public attendees, they can virtually hit their icon, their hand icon on their smart device, or they can actually dial a star and a nine from their telephone to virtually raise their hand also if they would like to speak. Starting, I see, Ms. Alderman, if you would like, please go ahead and start your public comment.
For one thing, I sent an email and not one of you replied. There should not be the "we" debatement item on, it was not publicly noticed in the community voice, it was not in there. But of course, you've done it again, and you approved the final agenda without, without having it properly noticed. The other thing is your COVID response. I want to know what you as a city are doing, not other people are doing. There's, I'm listening to the Runner Park City Council meeting for the last hour and forty, almost two hours, and they've spent the last hour and forty-five minutes telling how they're dealing with the emergency, what each person has done, what they have a plan for, they have reserves, they have all this stuff, they say everything they've done, and you have nothing. Sorry, you didn't plan. You're failing at this. It's, how about giving us some services instead of working on projects that are, that, working on projects that we don't know if they're going to continue? You're making sure you guys can have money to keep your, to keep your jobs, but you're not doing anything for the citizens. That's it. Thank you.
And Ms. Alderman, did you want to comment separately on the consent calendar, or were you done with both? Lauren, can we turn back the volume for Ms. Alderman? Were you wanting to comment separately on the consent calendar, or were you done with both? Go ahead, Ms. Alderman.
I'm done by both.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mayor Skilman, we'll move to our next. Raised hand, George Berich. Go ahead.
Thank you, council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. This is former councilman George Berich, and I would like to address the council and bring you back to the March 18th city council meeting. I have some concern, some concerns about that. I want to bring to your attention, I spoke that night on a few items at City Hall, and I want to bring your attention to the fact that Mayor Skilman interrupted me a few times by mumbling on the microphone under her breath while I was speaking. And this isn't the first time this has happened, so I'm trying to be helpful to bring this to your attention. I was trying to, trying to draw an analogy to some other things in town, but the mayor refused to simply interrupt and ask me to clarify, but rather just mumbled into the microphone with the microphone on. I think it's totally unprofessional. That's not a way to clarify anything. I would surely yield to the mayor if she needed something clarified or wanted to interrupt. And then when she found out that it was unnecessary to do so, she could always add some time to my, to my presentation. But, you know, that's not how you interrupt or object in a court of law. I don't know any law school that teaches people to do this. It's unprofessional. It gives the city a bad impression on the public to hear any city council member, let alone the mayor, to be mumbling while a citizen and a taxpayer is intelligently addressing the city council and using their three minutes to speak. I would ask you to please stop this and do it right. And analogies are important. I know sometimes the council has a hard time following along when a, when a citizen is making an analogy for your benefit, but be patient. And then I do have a couple questions about consent items. Thank you.
Mr. Berich, go ahead with your consent.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. On item D of the consent items, I see that there's this local early action planning grant program, this lead. And what I'm concerned about is that citizens for years have been asking the city council to do some early action planning and do some emergency preparedness planning. And all we've gotten is, is silence. Now, I don't know whether you need a grant, a state grant, or a federal grant in order to do some early action planning, but I think it, it's very telling that we've had many, many opportunities and many citizens who've asked to meet with you, to have a Saturday workshop, to get ahead of the ball a little bit when it comes to action planning and emergency planning. And I'd like some clarification on why now are we addressing this issue, and if it's a matter that, matter that we, we have some kind of funding in the, in the pipeline for this. There's also on the consent calendar, this idea of hiring more consultants. And I want some clarification on this because Kattati has spent millions of dollars over the last fifty-some-odd years on consultants. Yet now, we're looking at hiring more consultants on top of these consultants. Okay, thank you very much. I'm finished.
Mayor Skilman, is it for people with their hands raised? Okay. Do you want to, can we please check in with the two other folks and see if they wanted to comment on citizens' comment, citizens' business, rather? Of course. I see Chris. Chris, if you'd like to, you can make a public comment. The icon on the screen indicates Chris might be muted. We'll move down to Marcel Delagnes. Okay, oddly enough, he's now. Oh, there we go.
I, I have no comment for this. I have no comment for this.
Thank you. And I see Chris is now available. Chris, if you have any public comment? Okay, Mayor Skilman. Okay, great. So we will move on then. On consent calendar item, we've got items A through K.
I'll move to approve items A through K. This is councilmember Delofo.
I'll second those. This is councilmember Harvey.
This is councilmember Moore, and I'd like to pull item I.
Okay.
If I may.
Okay.
All right, I'll revise, I'm sorry, I'll revise my, my motion to be items A through H and as well J and K.
I will revise my second then to correlate with that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all except for item I. We'll take a roll call vote for our votes. Councilmember Delofo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lehman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we can move to item I, purchase a bucket truck and towable generator.
Thank you. Mayor and councilmember Moore, were you, actually, Moore, would you like a council or a report on that item?
I'm sure if you would be obligingly a brief report would be terrific. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so basically what this is, is a, is a purchase of a new bucket truck. Our existing bucket truck is in our replacement schedule. It is due for replacement, actually overdue for replacement. So that's what that is. And the bucket truck, in case anybody doesn't know, the bucket truck is used to maintain like limbs over roadways, traffic signals, street lights, that sort of thing, things that require a mechanical lift to safely put a public works person where they can repair it or maintain whatever they're doing. And then the towable generator, that is just what it sounds like. And what, what that's typically And what, what that's typically used for with us is to, to plug into sewer lift stations. So for example, during the power, public safety power shut off, that was used quite a bit. Our existing one was trying, we used it, but it was having some, it was also reaching the end of its life and having some mechanical problems. So we also rented a towable generator too last fall, and it, it's anyways due for replacement. So that generator would be used primarily to keep the sewer lift stations running during power outage, especially extended power outage. That's it.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. Are there any questions for City Manager Damian Opid on this item?
I'm, I'm sorry, I was muted. I do have a couple questions, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
My, my primary question on this was the lack of vendors available for this type of equipment. In looking at the report, I would think that that would be something, the bucket truck specifically, would be something that we would be able to find in a greater geographic region and shopping for that and potentially at a better price?
So I will, I think Craig Scott is on the line as well, and I'll let him jump in after me here. But, but basically, I know Public Works had gotten several different prices for different bucket trucks that either, that didn't work for a variety of reasons. And so it's fairly specialized equipment. I think this is the one that they found that's the best price for what they are looking for, the size they're looking for. But I can let Craig elaborate on that.
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer. The city has been, staff has been looking into purchasing a bucket truck for probably a year now. And one of the early things that we looked at was purchasing one of the surplus bucket trucks from the county, because we have the fleet maintenance agreement. So we were aware that they had some, however, those trucks were like much larger than what our need was. And so we, after exploring that for quite some time, we then went out and the quote that we got was from a company out in Dixon, and it meets the requirements of what we're looking for. So this truck is, is very similar to the gas trucks that you see going around doing repairs to the overhead lines. And it's something that, that meets our requirements and our needs. So it was something that we spent quite a lot of time looking for, and we did look at least two, two different vendors for this, and this is what we arrived at. As you notice, the quote actually has a combination of different pieces of equipment. So there's a base truck that it goes on, and then there's all of this equipment that gets custom added to the truck. But it's quite the effort to get spec down. I hope that helps.
It does. Thank you very much, Craig. I just thought for, you know, that kind of money, in looking at the specs, it's not even a four-wheel drive, is it? It's a four-by-two?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have on that one.
Okay, were there any other questions from council members on this item?
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
Of course, go ahead.
So how old is the truck that we have?
I don't know the answer to that, but it is, it's over twenty years, I would, I would venture to guess. And so, you know, the issue, as you'd guess, would be that it's, it's really difficult to maintain because those parts are no longer available. It's, it's quite the antique.
And then, so what, since this item is quite a pricey item, what is the life expectancy of this truck, new truck?
It, yeah, that, that's, that's something I'm not really well-versed to answer. I would think it would be in excess of twenty years because it's not being driven all over the place. It's just, it probably never leaves the city limits. And if it's really well-maintained, I would think it would be fifteen, twenty years.
So we would expect it to be similar to the one that we already had, so we're, it's actually a long-term purchase. So while it seems like an expensive item, if you extrapolate that over twenty years, it's not really as bad as it would seem.
Correct. Yes, it, it, it has quite a long life, lifespan.
That is helpful. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions from the council members? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anybody on the attendees who are interested in commenting on this item?
I see no raised hands. Would you like to roll for the attendees?
No, it's okay. I don't see any raised hands either, so I think we are okay. All right, so I'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Lambin. With that, I'd like to move that we authorize the city manager to proceed with purchases of the bucket truck and towable generator.
Second. This is Susan.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do a roll call for your votes.
Councilmember Deloxxo?
Yes.
Councilmember Lambin?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
No.
Mayor Skillman?
Yes. Okay. And with that, we'll move on from the consent calendar and on to direction of future agenda items. So does anybody on the council wish to add to future agenda items?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Delosso. I did put my hand up.
I see that, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I see that. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm not a hundred percent sure if this is the right place for this question to be asked, but it's the time of year where we do the city manager's evaluation, which I've been involved in that the last several years, and we typically need to form an ad hoc committee. So I don't know, and maybe Damian, if you could weigh in on this, I don't know if we can put that as soon as the next agenda. I mean, this isn't a complicated item because either myself and one other person would be coming back with a draft for a closed session. So I just wanted to bring that up at this point, see if it's the right time for it.
Hi, Councilmember Delosso. I mean, in terms of the technical process, I think it would be okay to have it on the twenty-eighth. That's feasible to start the discussion, I should say.
Correct, okay. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else with direction on future agenda items? I'm not seeing any hands, so just give it a second here. All right. With that, we'll move on to item twelve, public hearing. And we'll start with approval of the one twelve-month extension to the Last Colonel's subdivision tentative map. And I believe that is Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. For directions, this is K. D. Harris. I'm a senior planner with the city of Cattati. And I have, I'm going to request remote control. I have a very brief PowerPoint that I just thought would be helpful, given the format that we're operating in tonight. And so this is a map that was approved by the city council back in two thousand and six. This is kind of an overview of the map here. I have another picture further. And also, just so that you're aware, this map is on page two-twenty-six of your, of your packet, so that if you want to see it in paper. So let me move on here. Okay, Lauren, I don't think I have control, so perhaps you could just go to the next screen for me? Thank you. This property is a one-eight, one-point-eight acre property at the top of Lasker and also adjacent to Honor Place. And then if you could go to the next screen? And this is a picture of the tentative map. Where that goes through here, you can see the six different residential subdivisions, as well as the extension of Lasker Lane feeding into that. The lower five parcels would be, would take access from Lasker Lane, and the topmost parcel would take last, take access from Honor Place. There's six parcels in this one-point-eight acre property. And then if you move on again. Okay, so this map has been around for a long time. It's one of the longest maps that's been around. It began in two thousand and six. It had a two-year expiration date, or it had a two-year life. And then before its expiration, the city council had granted an additional two years to it. And then we had the economic downturn, and the state legislature approved a series of statutes, one after another, which extended the life of particular maps. And this particular map qualified for four of those extensions, which ultimately brought it to two thousand, gave it an expiration date of two thousand and eighteen. Prior to that expiration, the city council approved a one-year extension and then also approved another one-year extension. That was one we did actually last year, about a year ago this time. And then if you could go to the next slide? So as, as discussed in the staff report, there were some issues that, with personal issues of the applicant that caused the progress to slow and stop at times, but all of that has been resolved, and the design review application is complete, and we're intending to bring public hearings in May and June. It will first go to planning commission for recommendation, and then it will come to city council, since you were the deciding authority on, on the previous design review. And I do want to let you know that the final map processing has been initiated. And actually, I want to touch on this just for a moment, because a year ago when we discussed this, there was some infusion, I think on my part, in answering a question of Ms. Harvey's, which was what, what would happen with the final map? And I want to be clear that the final map is simply the recording document that describes the lot lines, the meets and bounds, it has particular statements on it, and as well it shows the easements. But throughout that process, every person from the city engineer to the need planner and the director and, and the surveyor have to ensure that the map, the final map conforms to the approved and conditioned tentative map. So there's no, there's nothing that's going to change from that approval in two thousand and six as far as the map goes. And then with respect to the design review portion, just so that you're aware and any people in the public are aware, that there are no significant changes from two thousand and six. We've asked the applicant to try to keep everything the same because there wasn't a lot of time spent working out the project back then. And all the home designs, the landscape screening, the pad and the building heights are all completely unchanged. The only changes we've made is we slightly increased the diameter of the cul-de-sac, and that was to, for fire truck. And we wanted to make sure that their stormwater and water quality control mechanisms were improved to current standards, and we wanted to make sure that the map that was approved would still be in substantial conformity if there were changes to, to any water quality or stormwater control. And, and we, we were able to show that it wasn't. And then we also wanted to make sure that we coordinated the landscaping with the stormwater facilities, and those are really minor adjustments that don't really have any change with respect to screening or privacy screening that was done. And so, next slide, please. That's really my presentation, and I'll be available for questions. And we're recommending that you move to adopt a resolution approving a one-year time extension to the Last Colonel's tentative map, resulting in a new expiration date of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one. And that resolution is on packet page two-twenty-two. And I also, just before I close, I want to let you know that the applicant, as well as his engineer, are the, are attendees tonight, so if you do have questions for them, they're available to answer those. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation, and I'll bring it back to council first to see if there are any questions for staff on this item. Susan Harvey, Councilmember Harvey.
Unmuted. I have a question on things like building code. So for instance, I know the building code now requires sprinkler systems. Does that, is that applicable to these, or do they get grandfathered back into something that was there in two thousand and six?
No, they, they are applicable. Any, the homes, when they're constructed, will have to conform to all current building and fire code standards. Sometimes an applicant will file a tenant, what's called a vesting tentative map, and they can be vested for certain city standards, you know, protection that if, if there's a change, that they can move forward with their vesting map. This is not a vesting map, so they are, they're subject to any change in any standard, both city and state, so they would have to follow any new rule.
Thank you. That's helpful. I, I, that's a little subtle difference between the regular one and the vested one.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions for, from council? Not seeing any hands up. Okay, so I will open this up for public comment. Is there anybody among the attendees who would like to comment on this item?
Hey, did we have Ms. Alderman? Ms. Alderman, if you'd like to, go ahead.
Um, one thing, I, I'm not totally against this project. The pro, one thing I saw was that it started in two thousand and six, and then you've done extensions and extensions, and one part of the, one part of the packet said that you're only allowed six extensions, and this would be the seventh. So I'd like to see that addressed. Thank you. That's it.
Mayor, would you like me to answer that?
Sure, yes, if you could address that. Thank you.
So I think what the staff report refers to is the number, not the number really, it's how long you can off, you can provide extensions. Now, there's two different types of extensions that have been given to this map. One are the statutory extensions that the legislature granted, and they were automatic extensions. In addition to that, the city council can approve up to six years of extensions. So our extensions are separate from the legislative actions that automatically extended the maps, and they're in addition to those legislative actions. The current, if approved tonight, you will be giving an effective life to the map of five years and five months, because the previous map, it required additional time for us to process, so we got five additional months. So effectively, this approval will give it five years and five months of a life. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'm not seeing any more hands for the attendees.
Ms. Gobbin, if I can interject?
Of course.
We have one phone call in listener. I think we'll check and see if they have any public comments.
Oh, thanks.
Okay. To the caller with the last digit, uh, three, one, four, two.
Yes, this is Christopher Deluzak. I'm the owner of the project. And I thank you for all your efforts by the city of Cattati and all the work that's been put into it. I appreciate you people. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I show no more hands. Would you like me to go through the list?
Um, no, I think we're good. It sounds like, um, the other folks who are attending were also part of this, um, presentation. So, um, I think we can bring it back to council. Thank you.
So with that, I would move to adopt a resolution granting one twelve-month time extension to the Lasker Knoll subdivision tentative map, including all previously adopted conditions of approval, resulting in a new expiration date of April fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
And I'll second that. This is Landman.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. If we can roll call through and see, get our votes.
Councilmember Delusso?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Skolman?
Yes.
Okay. And with that, sorry, somebody was starting to talk.
I guess we're clanking you.
Oh, thank you very much. All right. And we will move on to item B, introduction of revisions to Cattati municipal code, chapter eight point one six. And I, oh, there's my folded page. Um, so me from city manager, Mr. Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Why the, uh, the short slide that gets loaded up? I get control. I just wanted to, um, also introduce, uh, Battalion Commander Wiman from Rancho Adobe Fire District. He's, he's on the, um, he's on the meeting as well. And so we'll, we'll go through this together, um, the presentation together. And he's also, of course, available for questions as well as myself after. And can we get the next slide, please? There we go. Okay. So, um, just a little background first, I think will be helpful for this discussion. So there's, um, there's several models for city fire services and the, and, um, certainly in Sonoma County and I think generally in the state. There is the municipal fire department model and this is a model where, um, this is, it's a city-owned and run fire department. It, the, um, fire department serves all fire prevention, inspection and service needs for the city. And, um, in terms of funding, it's funded, um, by a property tax allocation to the city directly through, uh, for fire services. Um, the cities in Sonoma County that are like this, they have this model of fire service are Santa Rosa, Petaluma and Runner Park. Alternatively, there's, um, uh, a model that is contract fire services. And this is, this is when there's no, um, city fire department because the city opted to not form their own department for whatever reason, but they have the, um, the statutory authority to do so. Um, instead they opt to contract with a fire agency. Typically this is an adjacent fire agency or district. Um, because the city could form their own fire department as a municipal fire department, but they don't, um, they receive the property tax allocation directly for the service. Um, as is the contract model, they pass through the tax allocation to a contract fire department or district. And so cities in Sonoma County that are, um, under this model of fire service are the city of Sonoma and Sebaston. Hold on. There we go. Um, all right. So yet another model is a fire district model. And so, um, this is where there is a fire district, um, and, uh, in Sonoma County, so I'm relating this to Sonoma County. The fire district has jurisdiction in the city. Um, in other words, district boundaries overlay the city. And there is no fire, there is no city fire department. The city, um, could not form a fire department unless it, um, separates from the district in a very defined process. So the city is served by the district, um, for all fire services and fire prevention needs. And, um, under this model, the district receives a property tax allocation from all city properties. So unlike prior to where the tax runs through the city, in this case, the tax doesn't go to the city, it goes directly to the district. And so, um, cities that follow this model are Cattati, Windsor and Cloverdale. And then finally, um, state law. So, uh, under state law, the fire chief's responsible for all fire prevention. Um, and state law accounts for these different models because just here in Sonoma County, you can see that there's, um, at least three different models and there may be some others elsewhere in the state. But because of there are these different models to provide fire service, um, state law, um, allows for each of these types of models. So in other words, cities can pass and enforce fire regulations. And this is typically, um, done in the municipal or contract fire department context. And, um, and districts are also able to pass and enforce fire regulations, primarily in the fire district model. So, um, a little, just brief history in Cattati here. So, um, we had a, um, there was a predecessor volunteer fire department in, um, in Cattati. It was actually, um, originally a, a volunteer department. And then in, uh, nineteen thirty-seven, the Cattati Fire District formed. And, um, that district was, um, roughly the city of Cattati, but not exactly. It, um, it did have other fire service areas outside of the city limits once the city formed in, um, sixty-three. So there, originally it was a district that served this sort of unincorporated area. Um, and then along came, um, Runner Park. And so part of the district got pulled back when Runner Park formed and they created their own fire department. And, um, and then, uh, when the city of Cattati was incorporated, then the district overlaid the city as well as some, um, adjacent unincorporated areas. So sort of in parallel, um, with this and certain, in its history, Pendero Fire District was formed in nineteen fifty-five. And, um, these two districts basically existed next to each other, um, for quite a while until nineteen ninety-four, when, um, through LAFCO, the two districts merged into what is now known as Rancho Adobe Fire District. And so, um, historically, the city had previously assisted, um, the Cattati Fire District and then the successor to that, the Rancho Adobe Fire District with administering the weed abatement program. Um, I think as everyone knows, due to layoffs and the recession, the city could, um, no longer assist with this, um, fire program. And so, uh, the city stopped, um, assisting on that program. Um, we do continue to, uh, clear weeds from fire hydrants to maintain accessibility. And, um, of course, we closely coordinate, um, on fire building code updates, fire marshal activities and land development review. Sorry about that. Hold on one second. Unfortunately, the end button on my computer is right next to the page down. All right. So, um, uh, Rancho Adobe had requested assistance on, um, on their weed abatement program within the city limits. And, um, they did this for a couple of reasons. They, um, they use the county ordinance outside of the city limits. And, um, the standards, the weed abatement standards are a little bit different there than the county ordinance than, um, then within the city. So within the city, they, um, uh, they use the state fire code, which the weed abatement standards are slightly different, as I mentioned, than the county ordinance. So, um, they asked if, uh, they can make, you know, if we, if we could work together, first of all, and, um, give them some assistance with fines administration. And, uh, with our recent code compliance ordinance, um, that opened up some new opportunities for this discussion. And, um, so the ordinance, and the ordinance that's before you right now, there's a couple of things, um, a couple of primary things, right? One would be that it would align the, um, weed standards with what is in the county. And it would also, uh, allow the fire district staff to, um, work under that framework. Uh, because Rancho Adobe, uh, district does not have a district-wide ordinance for weed abatement. And so, um, this is the, this is the model that and, um, as I mentioned, the standards would match the county ordinance. The, um, primary tool that would be used would be administrative citations, um, to correct non-compliance. Um, there's also in the ordinance, you'll notice that the, uh, some other standards, some other options are in there as well. Um, it's really just providing flexibility, but the primary tool would be administrative citations. Could be a notice and order. There could be nuisance abatement. Those are other mechanisms that could be used to accomplish the same goal. But, um, administrative citations is essentially like administrative ticket book. Straightforward way to do this. Um, and it also allows for summary abatements if an immediate public safety issue is Um, so in terms of process, Rancho Adobe personnel would still continue, um, like they do now to do inspections, contact owners. At typically, as I understand the process, write two letters to try to gain compliance from the property owners. And then Rancho Adobe would be authorized to issue administrative citations for weed abatement. This is, uh, administrative fines, um, in the cases where they can't get compliance through their normal process. And they would, um, uh, the first violation is a hundred dollars, second violation is two hundred dollars, third or more violations is five hundred dollars each. Um, each day could be a separate violation. So, um, it gets pretty stiff, pretty quick and would be, um, I think very motivating for people to make sure that they keep their weeds down. Um, and then the citations themselves are processed by, um, a third-party company who has the processing and administers the field process. Um, and then I will say the, um, ordinance that's, um, before you tonight for introduction, there is one, um, clarification that I would pose. And this is, um, in section eight point one six point zero seven zero, paragraph B. Um, at the end of that paragraph, just adding the text, um, as you see on the screen, that's italicized and underlined. Um, just to clarify that, uh, under chapter one point two eight is the administrative citations of this code is a, just make it explicit that this is another tool. And actually, in fact, it's probably going to be the primary tool that's used, um, to, um, that would be used by the Rancho Adobe Fire District to, um, gain compliance on weed abatement. And, um, that's a quick run-through of the ordinance, but I, um, wanted to hand, hand it off to Battalion Chief Wyman real quick to add any additional thoughts to this.
Thank you, Damian. Uh, this is Mike Wyman. I'm the Battalion Chief for Rancho Adobe Fire. Uh, just a little more background. Uh, so prior to, a couple of years ago, uh, our fire district and most of the others enforced vegetation management via the state fire code. Uh, and that works well in the, in the wide open spaces where it was kind of geared towards it. It is less, uh, well-written for, you know, the, the urban and, and urban boundary areas that we have in our area. So following the firestorms, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, the county, uh, got much more serious with this and adopted a, a comprehensive, uh, vegetation management code. But they tested it out in a couple of areas and then, uh, last year pushed it out to most of the county. Uh, and that has worked well for us. Uh, so the desire here is to bring the two parts of, uh, our fire district into the same alignment as far as the, the rules that we're enforcing. It's kind of awkward, uh, to have areas inside and outside the city that have a completely different, uh, set of regulations. So by adopting, uh, basically the language of the county ordinance, the city of Cattati would then have a code that is aligned with pretty much the, the entire rest of the county. Uh, and this is a little more strict than the state fire code, but it also addresses, uh, the smaller properties and, uh, roadways and that kind of thing that, that are important to us, uh, in addition to having, you know, the tools of the state fire code. In addition to that, uh, as Damian mentioned, we are looking to the city to help us, uh, with enforcement of the program. We typically don't get into, uh, enforcement on very many properties at all. Um, we found that if we were able to persuade people with letters and occasionally with fines, but we would like to be able to use the resources of the city, uh, to help us with problems that come up in that, that regard as well. That's all that I have.
Uh, thank you, Mike. So, um, yeah, so in this case, you know, we have, um, you know, there isn't, um, uh, you know, the district doesn't have a, uh, a district-wide ordinance. So, um, you know, so as Mike said, we would just be aligning with the, um, sort of the fire standards they use outside. And then, um, they would be using our administrative mechanism to, um, to do fines if it were to come to that. That's kind of it in a nutshell. So I would be happy to answer anybody's, uh, questions. That's the end of the presentation.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Mr. Obed. And also thank you very much to the Battalion Chief for attending this evening to help us with any questions or clarifications. Um, first I'll bring it to council. Are there any questions for staff? I see Councilmember Landman has his hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, I think, I thank you for the presentation. I think it seems very logical, very efficient to have one ordinance. Uh, an alignment certainly makes sense. Uh, I think the only question I have that I, and I think it's pretty clear from the staff report, but I just want to double check, would have to do with costs that might be incurred from this sort of thing. Because obviously, the only challenge we have in working together is we are two separate entities. There are separate funding streams for both the city and the fire district. City services need to come from the city fire stream and fire services obviously need to come from the fire stream. And that, if we were to do that, obviously the public might be less than happy if they found that, uh, fire money was being spent in the city or city money was being spent in the fire district. So with that, what I wanted to ask was, number one, it appears to me from this, it looks like costs incurred by the city, which would be largely staff time, I would imagine, look to be minimal, uh, through this process with the citation process. And I want to confirm that. Secondly, I want to confirm, it sounds like if we do spend some time there, it is largely made whole through the fine collection process. So I wanted to confirm that. And lastly, I just wanted to confirm, it, it, it looks like, um, I noticed on page two, two nine of the packet, that if there is something that becomes much more problematic, if need be, the fire district can also perform weed abatement and assess those costs and then at least onto the tax roll. That would be the process. Then that would be something that the, that the fire district would likely do with any help we can give.
Um, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Landman. So on the first question, administrative, administrative citations are a very, um, a very straightforward process. That's a, essentially like a ticket, um, ticket book. So as I understand the process, um, that the Rancho Adobe District, Fire District goes through is they would go out and, um, do an initial inspection of properties and note anybody that has weed issues, send them a letter, do a re-inspection. Um, and I think send them a second letter that says, hey, we've been here twice. If we have to come back a third time, um, how is envisioned this would work? Is they, it would say, you know, we're going to come back with our ticket book essentially. And, um, they have to come back a third or more times than they're, um, they're writing tickets at that point. And, um, those tickets would go to our, um, our third-party processing company. So it wouldn't involve, um, much staff time at all. Um, that's, that's sort of the basic, um, you know, I'd say general scenario. And then, um, there are other alternatives that, um, weed abatement could be done through, although I don't think those would be common at all. Um, if, you know, perhaps, you know, as we get beyond ticket books, it might make sense, um, you know, as we, um, you know, move this kind of joint, this kind of joint effort forward, it might make sense to, um, kind of take some of those outside, you know, corner cases and, and, uh, sort of memorialize it in MOU or something like that between the city and the district. But, um, ultimately, if there's someone that doesn't, I mean, most people will, um, respond, especially if there's a ticket involved. If, um, if they don't for whatever reason, then, uh, the fire chief still does have the authority to do a summary abatement. And basically that means that, you know, the property and it paid the fees if it's, if it's that kind of issue where it's a, um, real life health and safety type issue.
Good. No, I think that answers most I wanted to hear. Uh, I would agree. My experience, tickets are very motivational to all of us in the public. My experience, tickets are very motivational to all of us in the public. And I do like this. I think the benefits are clear. It makes it easier for the fire district. It doesn't appear to be an impact upon the city, and it gives us, more importantly, the benefit of continued and perhaps even makes it easier to do a we debatement in the community. So I think that's good. I just wanted to make sure that we had clarity on the funding for this. And it sounds like we do. I think I would like to see, I agree with your suggestion. I think for those corner cases, I'd like to see an MOU come forward in the future at some point for that, just so. I think all of us working on this today are in agreement, is my understanding. But in the future, a lot of us might not be here, both at the fire district and the city. So I think it would be good to have an understanding that we agree with. So that's clear for everybody that comes after us to make sure this keeps working well. So thank you for answering that, and very good.
Okay, and I see Vice Mayor Moore has a hand up as well. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. I did have a couple of quick questions. On the notification or the notices, what's the time period between the first, second, and third? And then my other question is, if you go back to the initial purpose under chapter eight point one six on packet page two thirty, down the last paragraph, eight point one six point zero one zero, in that sentence, it reads, "In a manner that they constitute a health, fire, and safety menace to the citizens of, and of the city and may constitute a nuisance", I would think that we would put "shall be abated" versus "should", so that it has a little bit more teeth. And now those are my, those are my questions and comments.
Thank you, thank you, John. So I'll let Mike answer the noticing question, but let me get clarification on the ordinance question you had. Sorry, what page was this on?
This is on packet page two thirty. Very last paragraph, down at the very bottom, the third word from the bottom, which reads "should be abated". And I would suggest that we put "shall be", because sometimes when you have vague language like that, I think it's a little better if it's stronger and more clear in its intent.
Understood. Okay. So, John, it's John Barker. Just to want to make sure that it doesn't create any problems that you're aware of from illegal, at that point.
Yeah, this is John Barker, the city attorney. I don't see an issue with changing "should" to "shall" on the bottom of page two thirty.
Okay, great, thank you. So, Mike, if you want to address the question about the timeframe between first and second and third notices on that?
Sure. So the county ordinance is which, which is what we're following, although that language is not carryover specifically. Gives a thirty-day period after the first notice is given, before a second notice or a second re-inspection is done. Typically, it's a little more time than that. And then we've been allowing a two-week period following that, although that is not necessarily required to be two weeks in length. It depends on the severity of the situation, depends on the severity of the fire season.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. That, that makes me feel a little bit better, because I, I would imagine if they tried to stretch it out, then you've gone through a whole season. And it gives, this gives the ability to say, no, the situation can be pretty severe. So thank you very much.
Right, and often, oftentimes, our ability to, to meet those deadlines is actually constrained by our own staffing. Because we have a great deal of properties and not very much inspectors, so that sometimes falls back on us.
Okay, thank you. I also see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up. You want to go ahead, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. Yes, I have to lower my, oh, you lowered my hand. So I have a question on the citations. Is there an appeal process? What happens if someone gets one? Who do they call? And how is that handled? I was just concerned that there might be staff time expended on those type of actions. So if you could help me with that, that'd be great.
Yeah, hi, Susan. So the citations, administrative citations, they are, there are, there is an appeal process, and so this is all printed on the face of the ticket. It tells people what the timeframes are for appeal and what the process is for appeal. And then, assuming they want to appeal that, they can contact the, the processing company within the timeframe that's allowed for. And the actual appeal process itself, it could be handled, it typically could be handled by the processing company. They have hearing officers that hear those appeals.
Oh. So would be our staff having, having to get involved with doing that, or the fire department's staff?
Right, it'd be, yeah, neither one of our staff would be hearing the appeal. And even if it bumps up to like, and I think this would be highly unlikely, but if it were to bump up to say like a notice and order process, even that administrative hearing officer is a, is a contract hearing officer, so it's not a city staff thing. But in that process, there may be some evidence, you know, evidence presentation by, in this particular, so like in a, in a normal nuisance abatement, or not nuisance, in a normal administrative hearing process, city staff would, would be presenting the evidence, or our code enforcement contractor would be presenting the evidence on a specific case. In this case, if this were ever to go that route, I think the most that would happen is that Rancho Adobe would, their staff, whoever inspects the properties, would have to show to the presentation to present the evidence for the hearing. But that's, like I said, that's unlikely. It would go that route. It's more likely to be through the type ticket, administrative citation process.
Oh, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, and I don't see any more hands up from council members, so we can open this up to public comment. And I believe that there's two out of the three attendees with their hands up. Yes, Ms. Helder, go ahead.
For one thing, this, you did not do any public notices for this agenda item for public hearing. Why are you talking about it? You should have postponed this till you properly noticed it. It's not going to have the public input it needed. The other thing I object to is Damian's report rewriting the history of weed abatement in Cattati. It's, this county issue was why the, the fire district could not write ones within the city code. And so if this is not coming together, this is so that the fire district can take over. And from what I understand from talking to fire district officials, money will be coming into Rancho Adobe Fire District separately through more direct channels to deal with weed abatement. You need to take, own up to your whole decade of not dealing with weed abatement. Everybody knows the story, how Diane Johnson took down the we debatement files, put them on Frank Treanor's dress, and said, "We debasement is the fire district's responsibility now, and you did nothing about it." So I'm generally for this county taking over the, to the county one, because that takes out that whole issue. And I think it should go through, but you need to really not go and rewrite history to do it. I guess that's it.
Okay, Mr. Barrett, go ahead.
Thank you, former councilman Barrett here. I disagree with Mr. Lammon. This is not all okay. I want to refer to you to page two twenty-eight of the staff report, where it says, "During the recession, the city was no longer able to administer this program on behalf of the fire district, and weed abatement enforcement was performed by the fire district under state fire code." That's not the case. I was on the city council then. We were able to administer the, the program. We could have come in on Saturdays. We could have scheduled extra meetings. It would have cost us nothing. This is a perversion of history. Second of all, you cannot pass any responsibility on to, or over to, the Rancho Adobe Fire District tonight. You can't do it. It's illegal. And I think partly this is some kind of cover-up for Mr. Lammon and all the years that he has violated the weed abatement ordinance in his own backyard. This is some kind of sick cover-up or something. And Caltrans is the largest offender of the weed abatement ordinance. And Mr. Wiseman has tried to do as much as he can to get Caltrans to, to clean up their property. And, but the city of Cattati has done nothing. They're the biggest offender. And how are they going to be pushed into doing anything now? And Mr. Wiseman does not speak for the fire district. I spoke to a couple of fire board members today. Mr. Wiseman does not. I appreciate him being here tonight, but I don't understand it at all. You should be discounting everything that Mr. Wiseman says tonight. Rancho, the Rancho Adobe Fire District does not have an urban weed abatement program for Cattati. They don't have an urban program. I've been attending both meetings of the fire district and the city of Cattati about this issue for well over five years. And the board of directors keep telling me, George, there's nothing we can do. We have no responsibility for what happens in Cattati. And we are not going to abide by Diane Thompson throwing this file, these files on our desk. We tried to get it right. The current situation has endangered our homes, year after year, year after year. Nothing is going to get done again this year, I don't believe. You're going to kick this can down the road again this year. This is also not a fire, just a fire issue. It's an urban light issue. Okay, it's a town pride issue, all these high weeds. It's a tourism issue that you don't want to address, even though Pat Gilardi once said, "We love our weeds", okay, another political blunder. There is no appeal process unless it's on the ordinance. Mr. Barker should be able to tell you that. Despite what's being put on a citation, unless you put it into law, there is no appeal process. What's wrong with you people? The Rancho Adobe Fire District is, is not going to get any support now from you folks. You haven't given them any support. Okay, lastly, there is no joint agreement here, okay? You need, you need to stop this. I object to it on the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, I think that's it for public comment. I don't see any other hands up. So we'll bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Lammon.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, it was mentioned in a comment that, if I copied this downright, that we can't pass this responsibility to Rancho Adobe Fire. To best of my knowledge, that was actually done through the Fire Protection District Law of nineteen eighty-seven, also known as the Richardson Fire District Law, which you'll find in Health and Safety Code, I think it's one three eight zero zero. Secondarily, if you take a look at Statute or Authority, RFD does have that through state fire code, where it says very clearly, "They shall" enforced by the chief. So that's kind of ancient history, and I think all of us here presenting tonight at least understand that. What I wanted to ask Chief Wyman, I, I believe I know the answer to this, but I think we need to hear it confirmed. You are here tonight, in fact, as an official spokesperson for Rancho Adobe Fire District. You're not out here just spending an evening saying whatever you want to say, I believe. I, I'd like to have that for the record, please.
Mr. Lammon, that is correct. I am representing the Rancho Adobe Fire District. I am the administrator of the vegetation management program, and I am working directly with the fire chief to create this model and to work with the city with what came in past.
Thank you, thank you, chief. And I know you've been working on this for several years, so thank you for your efforts and thank you for working with us to hopefully make it work even better for you. So I appreciate that, and my apologies that we had to put you in a position where you actually had to answer a question like that. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or clarifications? Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
I would like the city manager to address the comment that was made about the noticing, because it's my understanding that the noticing is correct, please?
Sure, the city manager of it.
Yeah, hi. There was, the noticing was, was proper. There was no noticing problems.
Okay, and then I see Councilmember Delasso has his hand up as well.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have no questions for staff or for the battalion chief, but again, thank you for your presentation. I just want to say that there has been some level of confusion and certainly from, for the public in the future, this may not look necessarily any different. This is really more of an administrative process. And, and I think by going in the direction that staff is recommending, and I'd be willing to make a motion if we're done with comments, but if, what the staff is recommending, if we move in that direction this evening, I, I think it'll be a much better place and a much better process. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I don't see any other hands up for comments or clarifications, so I'll bring it back. Now, a close public comment for, yes, Councilmember Lammon.
Yeah, I, I would be supportive, and I would be happy to second a motion if Councilmember Delasso wanted to make it. I wonder if we could just add the stipulation, that intention of both parties to circle back and do a memorandum of understanding related to any outlier cases, as the city manager discussed earlier.
I'd certainly be willing to add that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so are we ready for a motion?
I see no other hands up. I'd be willing to make a motion. So I know that there's, I have to make it first. I, I know that there's a revision and another change in wording, so let's see if I captured it all. I move to introduce an ordinance revising the city's we debatement ordinance and also revision in chapter eight point one six of the Cattati municipal code. And in the purpose statement, the word "should" should be changed to "shall", which is currently on packet page two thirty.
Just for clarity, councilmembers, we were referring to packet page two thirty, and that is the redlined version of the ordinance. The, the clean version that we're going to be amending and introducing is on page two, it begins on page two forty-two.
Correct. Thank you for that. I had made note of that, and I didn't read my own notes, so yes. Change that page two thirty to two forty-two. And Councilmember Lammon, I believe you also had wanted as a part of this motion that both parties would agree to come back and work on an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, for some of these additional issues.
Yes, that would be correct. A letter of intent or a memorandum of understanding, whatever's, whatever seems appropriate.
Whatever's most appropriate. So that's my motion.
Mayor Skelman, just, just for clarity, Damian, maybe you can help us out here. There was a, the packet version of the ordinance does not include an amendment that Damian was suggesting that was included in the slide. So Damian, if you could just point us to that. I'm assuming that the motion includes that.
Yes, so the, the motion, I think Councilmember Delasso mentioned this, but this would be on packet page two forty-six, section eight point one six point zero seven zero, paragraph B. Just ending that paragraph with additional language that says, "For an administrative citation in accordance with chapter one point two eight, administrative citations of this code." And that's it.
Okay, with that motion and the two changes, as well as the letter of intent or memorandum of understanding, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. If we could do roll call for our votes, please. Councilmember Delasso?
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Absolutely, positively, affirmatively.
Mayor Skelman?
Yes, thank you. Okay, and with that, we can move on to item 13, city manager's report. Back to you, Mr. Obed.
All right, thank you, councilmembers and mayor. For a couple of things, I just wanted to acknowledge that this week is designated National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So in English, that means people like our police dispatchers. So if you see a police dispatcher or you talked to one on the phone, remember to thank them. No hugs. We're doing social distancing right now, but maybe in a year from now, we can do that. So construction updates, I mentioned this earlier, but the Rhonda Fleety Ranch building, after they finished securing the buildings and making the site safe, work was suspended last week, and work will resume once health order permits this type of work. The North Bay Transportation Agencies, so those are the, that's like Sonoma County Transportation Authority and equivalent agencies in Run County and Solano and Napa County, I believe it was all of them, sent a letter to MTC, a joint letter, this week of shovel-ready roadway projects ready for if or when federal stimulus money becomes available. Catanas 2020 Street Project was included in the list. So it's unknown if that will move forward in Congress, but there's various versions of bills like that moving through the process, sort of CARES Act Part II. And on the wayfinding project, that project timeline has not been impacted yet at this point. They're still fabricating signs, and that's going to be a four to six week process until the signs are delivered. Once they are delivered, then at that time, depending on where we are with the shelter in place, we'll have to make an assessment as to whether construction on this phase one of the wayfinding project can move forward or if it has to be suspended until the shelter in place order allows it. And then all the other projects are still proceeding through design and getting ready to go out to bid. And with all these projects, we just will have to make assessments as we get to a shovel-ready project, if it is able to move forward or not. On the recreation side of things, again, I just mentioned this, but we are working with Redwood Empire Food Bank for a food drive coming up on April 27th. It's a Monday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the community center. Last week, we offered two days of pickup for egg hunt to-go kits, which was an alternative to our canceled bunny brunch event due to the shelter in place. Over the two days, we provided families with over 200 egg hunt to-go kits, which included pre-stuffed eggs to hide at home, craft kits and coloring sheets. And families were happy to get out of the house, I think, and connect with us, and we were happy to see them. And they were able to enjoy the holiday at home in a safe, creative, and fun way. Also, as you all know, we did create a virtual recreation page that we're continuing to build out. And it'll, you know, we're continuing to add new resources to that to provide families with ways to be active, creative, and learn while practicing social distancing. So there's virtual tours of museums, online youth and adult exercise classes, craft instructions and ideas and more. And just remember to check back often because it's being updated frequently. And this week, we plan to launch our Keep Catanas Connected social media contest. This was originally created by Rancho Catanas High School Hospitality and Recreation students. We were, in that program, we assist them and give them sort of real-world opportunities to do projects. And this was one of the projects. So it would enable us to follow along as we challenge the community to various in-home, safe activities for a chance to win prizes that are donated by local businesses. I was joking with Ashley the other day that, you know, maybe one of them is the best of the quarantine haircuts. And we'll see. There's going to be several like challenges like that throughout the weeks of the contest. So look for more on that hopefully by the end of the week. And, you know, as we just navigate through this shelter in place orders, just generally begin to look out for more and adaptive recreation programming. For this or anything, you always can contact Ashley, and that has not changed. So 665-4222 or ablesnickatantacy.org as well as the city website, their recreation page, city's Facebook, or Instagram. And with that, that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And see if there's any questions from council. I see Councilmember Harvey has her hand up. So go ahead. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, everybody is having difficulty during these times, and it's difficult for parents with kids at home, and they're trying to do work as well as taking care of kids and schooling and all that. So I have to say that the egg hunt kits were very well received by my grandsons, who their mother was able to actually attend a meeting for an hour. She gave them each of their bags and had them each hide the eggs for one another. So that took them a whole hour and they loved it. And so it was a great pleasure and it helped to be able to allow my daughter to attend the meeting. So thank you for that.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Great. And got Vice Mayor Moore with his hand up. Go ahead. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Skelman. I just wanted to commend the city on what they're doing in the recreation department and the outreach that's going on with the community right now in light of the shelter in place. I think you guys have done a fantastic job. And I think the social media information and availability of resources has been tremendous. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and I don't see any more council member hands up. So I'll open up to public comments. I do see one attendee with her hand up. So Lauren, please help.
Miss Alderman, go ahead.
This actually goes back to the weed abatement ordinance, but sort of with city manager's report. Damian, it has not been public notice. I would like you to please show to me the documents that it was either on the website or whether it was on the, in the Community Voice. There was the Lasker, what, public notice? There was not this weed abatement. There was nothing showing that this meeting had weed abatement. So there was no way to get any public comment on it. That's it.
Okay, Mayor Skelman.
Okay, thank you. So I'll close public comments. I don't see any other hands up. And move on to city council member reports. So I guess I get to pick the order. No, I'm just kidding. Do you have anything to report out, Councilmember Deloso?
No, certainly every meeting that I should have been attending has all been canceled. I did want to point out that today, it was noticed about the catatitogo.com website, where different business services are put onto a website and it's updated regularly. So I would encourage people who are listening or who will hear this at some point later on to check out that website because there's some good local information about some of our businesses. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm guessing it might be the same for most folks. But Councilmember Harvey, do you have anything that you can report out?
Yes, I do. I haven't been as lucky as John. So on April 6th, we had the Sonoma County Water Agency meeting. And at that meeting, the budget was passed. There was lively discussion coming from Santa Rosa, and they did not pass the budget. But all the rest of the members did. So it moved forward. So that was interesting. On April 9th, we had our Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Sustainability Agency Board Meeting. And they are progressing on the plan. It has been a little bit difficult for them considering all the situations with everyone, including the staff as well as the consultants. So trying to get things done has been difficult, given people's situations. But they are moving forward as best they can. And at this point, there has been no extension of the timeframe for having to complete a plan. So not sure if that will change over time, but they're doing the best they can to get our plan together. And then lastly, we are now meeting weekly with the North Bay League of California Cities' Executive Committee, just to kind of keep touch bases on what's going on in all the different areas of the North Bay. So that's been really rather interesting to see the information and stay in touch with people about things that are working, are not working. And as I have found different things, I've been able to share them with Damian so that he can follow up for Sonoma County. And let's see, tomorrow I will have a Waste Management Agency meeting. So I've been busy with meetings, and that's all I have.
You're going to get really good at Zoom.
Well, I wish that everyone would use Zoom. A lot of them do, but the Waste Management Agency, they've decided to use WebEx, and I have been unable to get WebEx to work on any of my devices. So shoot. So anyway, so that ought to be interesting. So I will have to just participate by phone tomorrow because none of my devices are happy with WebEx.
Well, every day we're learning something new.
Yep.
Okay, so move, Councilmember Landman, do you have anything that you can report out?
I do. First of all, I'll thank Councilmember Harvey for just making me very worried about my next Laffo meeting because I remember them next year, they want to use that WebEx too. So I hope my result is a little better, but I suspect it won't be. Like you had been going to meetings, we had our first SETA meeting yesterday, a three-hour Zoom meeting. With all the joy that it sounds like that entails, it was there. But there's an update from there that I think is worth taking a few minutes to share. As you know, we've talked about a few times the last year or so, certainly the last six months, there's been some effort at SETA to take a look at Measure M. And that's our local roads program we've had for almost 20 years. It was basically, one of its biggest claims to gain was completing the 101 quarter and looking into having some sort of success or extension there because it does sunset in four years. And it's been actually very successful, that sort of program. It's brought a lot of dollars back, up to a seven to one ratio of federal and state money coming in for every dollar we put in. So that was all well and good. And committee is working this. It got a draft expenditure plan together that allowed us to double the amount of local funding going to keep our roads smooth and working, more than double the amount of local money going to bus service, and tripling the amount of money for bike and pedestrian programs, as well as providing some significant capital and project funds for high priority projects in each of our jurisdictions. And the ability to do that without changing the tax, just keeping it as is, was done because with the huge cost of 101 mostly completed, we have the wherewithal to put a lot more into the local communities now and not so much in the freeway. So that was all well and good until the world completely changed a few weeks ago, as we all know. So the board spent some time yesterday kind of weighing the vast uncertainties, economic uncertainties that everybody's facing right now, trying to think of how those might play out versus seeing something on the ballot and then balancing that against the fact that the ballot is likely to be a lot less crowded now than originally anticipated. And that we find ourselves in a position that our current measure expires in 2024. Because we scheduled new roads in a multi-year process, it's not exactly like they have a full four years to continue. In a year or so, if we don't have money set up and knowing that we will continue to be a self-help county that's eligible for that funding, that all stops. So there's still a lot of uncertainty, I think, at the board. But we told staff to go ahead and go forward to continue researching what options might look like. And that comes back at our next meeting on May 11th. The other wrinkle to this is some stakeholder uncertainty. We have a wide group of stakeholders who are very interested in this, many different aspects of the public. You could roughly divide it into environmental interests and business interests. And they come sometimes from different perspectives, and they both want sometimes different things. So there's some pushback and a difficulty in getting to a full agreement that everybody can live with. And of course, it's the type of process that needs everybody to be, or almost everybody at least, to be in agreement. So we'll see if it's brinksmanship or true problems. But that happens May 11th. So if it does go forward, then it comes back to city councils to hear and see if they approve later after May. So we'll see where that goes. But I just wanted to get you all up to date on that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And then last but not least, Vice Mayor Moore, do you have anything that you can report out?
Just a couple of quick things. We have a REMF, of course, telemeeting on the 23rd. So next week we'll have that. And then we had a, there was a chamber of commerce meeting, and city manager Obed and community development Noah Roche were presenting some of the economic development items that are coming forward and some of the programs that we're looking for down the road and as well as updates regarding different projects that are in the pipeline right now. And that was it. All I have to report out on this.
Okay, great. Whoa, that was a weird feedback. And then the only thing I had to report, I've been having weekly mayor meetings with, and all the video conference, of course, just to check in with the other mayors, make sure we're all getting the same information, and then also coordinating every once in a while with members of the board of supervisors so that they can keep a surprise of anything that's a countywide concern that we all want to be aware of. And so that's what has been keeping me busy. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to item 15, public comment on non-action agenda items. And let me check. All right, we've got two hands up. So Lauren, if you could assist with that. Thank you.
Yes, Miss Alderman, go ahead.
My first one is future agenda item. Rhonda Park had over two hours today about, and they were talking, they have a specific financial plan on how to go over the, how to go through this epidemic. And they have $2 million in casino, from casino monies that they've saved. And we have no idea how this is going to impact the city in the future. They're even talking about giving small business loans at the city level and things like that to the businesses in Rhonda Park. So we need a plan. So I want that, I would like that as soon as possible, even if it has to have a special meeting, because you have no, we have no idea what the financial ramifications are of this. And you have to have a plan or we're going to just go on. Go look at Rhonda Park. Their council meeting tonight, see, get some ideas. Yeah, other thing is you need to improve the ability to do public comment on these remote meetings. Unless you were, knew that there was, got a city email or knew to check that, then you had to get an invite and a password to participate to give public comment. This is not even, this is not a fair way of doing public comment. You've only got two to three of us on here, and it's just not enough. People, it says on the city board, you know, city council meeting doesn't say how anything, how you can get, join and give public comment. During this time, we really need to know how to give comment in a more normal way. During this time, we really need to know how to give comment in a more normal way. And I also think you should have video, because it's very important to be able to see, interact what's happening. And think, look at Rhonda Park and look at you guys, and it is night and day. You need to follow Rhonda Park. That's it.
Mr. Barrage, go ahead.
Thank you, Council. This is George Barrage. For a future agenda item, I would like you to strongly consider a stub toe award for the 2009 City Council that we were talking about tonight, what was going on during the beginning of the recession. This town council was lazy at the helm, Diane Thompson, who was later fired. They were lazy talking about tax increases and tax increases. There was no city volunteers whatsoever for the weed abatement program or for anything else. No matter how much I suggested, we could get volunteers out there to help with the weed abatement program, and Diane Thompson wanted nothing to do with it, and the council fell right into line with her. They were doing nothing except looking for grant money from the federal government, from Obama, to bail them out, while Rhonda Park was doing very much better with their reserves. They were paralyzed. You know, even to the extent that when they tried to raise taxes, nobody from the Chamber of Commerce came to me to convince me that raising taxes during a recession was going to be such a wonderful thing. Nobody from SSU came to me. And if you remember, it was John Moore who came before the city council and said, the night we were thinking about raising sales taxes, "Do I understand correctly that this has to be a unanimous decision?" And he was right. All the councils looked at each other like deer with their eyes in the headlights. It was crazy. And Mr. Wyman does not speak for the Board of Directors of the Rancho Adobe Fire District, for Christ's sake. The fire chief does not implement, does not create policy. He does not send subordinates to other cities to give their condolences or agreements on anything. The Board of Directors sets policy. The fire chief implements policy, and anybody who's worked for any fire district for more than a few months should know this. And I talked to board members today, and they had no idea this was coming up, and they didn't have the time or the energy to race to read the report, and you guys opened up a real big can of worms with this, okay? It's just ridiculous. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we'll close that item. And then, Lauren, if I could check with you, there were no items received after the agenda was posted, is that correct? All items received have been posted to the agenda. Okay, terrific. So thank you all for participating in our first-ever virtual meeting, and we'll call this meeting adjourned at 8:50 p.m. Everybody have a good evening and stay safe out there.
Thank you, you too.